Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is discussion, uh, item one, governance team workshop with Mr. John Silvery from the Michigan Leadership Institute.
I will go ahead and, and just give kind of a why are we here before turning it over to Mr. Silvery? When thinking about things back in December, I've been going through some different trainings to prepare for this year. And I wanted to get us started, um, as we're moving into a new year with a couple. And as we've got two new trustees to the board. And the, the rest of us have been working together for a little while, uh, but we need to all be able to get to know each other. And since we're in a pandemic, getting together face to face is not really an option. So. Wanted to take a couple of minutes, have us all do a personality trait assessment and see. Who is sitting around you at the board table? What are their traits? So we can figure out. And, and we've, I've already joked with a couple of trustees about this that, that we're, uh. We're, we're showing up with the tendencies that we identify with. Uh, the second thing is due to the fact that we've been in this pandemic for a while. While we developed a strategic plan back in 2020 that goes through 2023. Uh, it's easy to forget what your long-term goals are when you're in the middle of, uh, a crisis. So I wanted to have us start to refocus on things that we might want the district to look at for this year. And then the final item that I had down was we've got a lot of unwritten rules, as do most districts. And if you ask somebody how we'll do things, they'll, they'll be able to tell you, but it's not written anywhere. So I wanted to introduce the idea of starting to maybe write down some of these procedures to move alongside of the bylaws and politics. So with that, that was the idea. I wanted to be able to take us out of our current situation for a couple of hours. Get to know each other, focus on 2021 before we dive back into the, the current issues at hand. And with that, I'll turn things over to Mr. Silvery.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I, I want to start out by, um, really thanking you for your service. Um, it, it has evidenced in part by being willing to meet on a Saturday morning. Uh, to talk about how you go about doing your business together and striving to do this as, as highly effectively as possible. So. That demonstrates a high level of commitment. Um, I know it's also a really difficult time. Um, I've heard someone smarter than me describe. What's going on now with the whole COVID situation for schools? As being an impossible problem with imperfect solutions. So almost no matter what you do. You're subject to criticism and, and understandably, you can understand how people feel on all sides of this issue. So. Um, it's a tough time to be an educator. It's a tough time to be a board member, but. I appreciate your willingness to do so and your commitment to doing so well. So thank you. I wish we could be doing this in person, by the way, but for obvious reasons, we can't. We'll certainly make the best of this. And I think we could be productive regardless. So I'll take just a, a minute to introduce myself, uh, just so you know a little bit more about who you're working with. Um, I am a, a longtime educator. I'm a former teacher, counselor, principal. Um, HR director, assistant superintendent, superintendent in two different districts. I was in Marysville. Schools in St. Clair County, which was 2,700 students and five buildings. And then moved to the Waterford School District in Oakland County, which at that time was, uh, 11,000 students in 20 school buildings. So. I've experienced in large and small. Been working with the Michigan Leadership Institute since 2015, when I retired from Waterford. And have been doing, uh, extensive work with districts with superintendent searches, strategic planning. Uh, governance, of course, um, administrative coaching, grade level reconfiguration, a variety of things. Um, I'm a, uh, very familiar with Dearborn and with your area. I was born and raised and graduated from high school nearby in Lincoln Park. After college, I, I, uh, after I married, I set, uh, we settled in Allen Park very nearby, raised our children there. Our son and daughter both graduated from Allen Park High School, and I was an administrator in Allen Park Schools for 14 years as well. So. Uh, Dearborn's very familiar to me. I'm basically a downriver boy, as is my wife. So. Um, I've always been very comfortable and had an affinity for the area. I want to call your attention to the ground rules at the bottom of the agenda. And why don't I go ahead and. I'm saying, ask the host to give me permission. I don't need that. See if I can pull up the agenda. Um, here we go. So the ground rules you could see at the bottom of the agenda. Just asking that everyone actively engage in the discussion, actively listen to one another. Ask you to silence your cell phones and put them aside. I used to ask people to turn cell phones off, but I was creating too much anxiety with folks. So I, I, I changed that. And just asking you to silence them, put them aside. Obviously, if there's something urgent you can need to attend to, you can do, do so. To value differences, uh, respecting. The dissent that we address issues if there's disagreement, but not people. To ask questions for understanding and to focus on the greater purpose. Just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with those. Let me know if not. I appreciate that. Let me raise right now, too. Um, we have quite a bits to cover, which I think we can, but in a, in a relatively limited time. We know we have a hard stop at one o'clock because you've got other important business to attend to. So I, I would be inclined not to take a formal break, but just invite people. If you need to disable your microphone, your camera, if you wish, take a quick break for yourself and come on back and rejoin us. Um, of course, we can, uh, do that more formally if that's the desire of the board. So. Um, I want to ask before we move on if everyone's comfortable approaching it that way. Okay, no dissent. All right. I appreciate it. So I, I do appreciate we did hear from everybody regarding the, uh, the temperament survey, as it's titled, that you took. Which is basically a personality inventory. These things I know I find always to be very interesting. And I hope you did as well. Um, sounds like from what Jim said, maybe, um, we're not necessarily. You can get to, it's hard for me to see. This is so tiny on my screen as I'm trying to get to the right attachment to share with you. But I will get to it. Bear with me a second. Okay, so here are the results. And remember, I asked you to, um, identify, um. Which of the four personality types you were most closely aligned with? And to share a couple of look fours and look out for. So. When you look, uh, under doers, there were two people who reported that they were doers, uh, one being Mary. And the look for is that she shared were limited skill of listening well to others due to impatience to move forward with thoughts. And that she's decisive and persistent in taking action. And look out for is what she shared is to make sure this is clear. She said, this is really, she wanted to emphasize not. Something to look out for with her. She is not lacking in sensitivity or consideration of others. So anything you wanted to add, Mary, or any questions anyone has about that? For Mary.
No, uh, the only thing I would add is, is that, um. I majored in psychology many, many years ago. So I've seen these, uh, surveys under various, uh, devices. And it's easy to pick out what are the words that you would like to reflect who you are or not. Um, but I'm not surprised, uh, that it went in that direction for me. Because I've been in this for a long time. But the one thing is, is there are limitations. To these types of, um, evaluations for everyone. And we've done a couple of the. Is over the years. This is my third term as board member. Um, and so I just want to remind everyone that, you know, I, I don't want us to be pigeonholed. Or identified strictly by one, uh, individual's, uh, estimation of categories. That's why I put in there that the lookout for us, because it was very glaring to me when it kept saying that there was a lack of sensitivity in a doer. And I, maybe it was the wording that they used, um, to, um, suggest that. A doer was moving ahead so much that they ignored. The people around them and their needs. And I just wanted to make sure that that's not the case. And most people who. Come into, uh, something like, uh, this as a board member. Is already placing themselves into a different category, uh, of willingness to, uh, work for the community. In, in a variety of ways.
I appreciate that, Mary. And your, your point is valid. This, this is, uh, really is a very simple, kind of a brief, um, assessment. And I mean, you're right, it shouldn't be taken as gospel and, and totally accurate, but it's a kind of a window into, um. Personality types. And I think it does to some extent give at least a bit of a reflection as to. Um, you know, how, how for you anyway, and for others to understand you. How it is that you tend, uh, to kind of view things and react to things. So. Um, moving on, then the other doer is, um, Jim. And Jim, I didn't get your look for us or look out for us. And I don't know if you, um, have something you wanted to share at this time. I want to give you the opportunity.
Uh, a lot of what was on there, uh, I can see in myself. Goal focused, uh, move forward with things, persistent. Uh, one of the, the issues is, uh, can be impatience. Uh, and that is something that, that will be shown from time to time that I will keep us moving through an agenda. But I will try to be cognizant and not, uh, let, make sure everyone's having a chance to have their voice heard. The other thing I'd add to what, uh, trustee Pavlicov just said is. I find that if I took this same assessment at different times, I have different responses. I would not be the same every time. It depends on, on, uh, where I'm at, at, at the current time, how my responses might show up. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. All right. And then there were, uh, two members who, um, indicated that they, uh, their results showed, uh, really close, uh, alliance. Uh, kind of a split between being a doer and an influencer. So, uh, first being Pat. And again, Pat, kind of along that same vein, I don't know if you would like to share. Maybe again, just a couple of perhaps things that stand out in terms of look for us or look out for us for your board colleagues.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah, um, basically, you know, being a brand new board member and, um, going back to like what Jim says. You know, you could take this thing three or four different times and, uh, come out with different answers. But I am pretty much a doer, you know, I don't, uh, you know, if I'm giving him, given an assignment or something. You know, I'm not gonna put it down and not do it. I'll make sure it gets taken care of on time. And, uh, you know, I, eh, over the years of all the things that I've done in this city. You know, I've pretty much, uh, have been in a doer and an influencer to a degree also. So, but it's very interesting.
All right. Thank you, Pat. And then the other doer and influencer was, um, Irene. Irene, would you like to speak to, um, same thing, please?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think I've taken a couple of these over the last couple of years just to kind of see where. The strengths and weaknesses are. Um, so it's pretty much aligned with what I've seen consistently from the previous ones I've taken. Obviously, those have changed greatly since, if I were to take this 20 years ago. Um, you know, with time, you kind of get to see where you are and, and work on something. So, um, yeah, I mean, I think mine were pretty much aligned with what I've seen in the past and my personality type.
Anything that stands out there in terms of, uh, for your, the benefit of your colleagues, something for them to kind of look for with you in terms of that or to look out for?
Um. Not necessarily. I think, um, you know, just overall, obviously I'm new, so still trying to. Listen, right? Because trying to see, um, how the board is run, um, but also bringing up. And trying to figure out like where my perspective, um, you know, being in the classroom, bringing that to the board. You know, and, um, you know, this week I toured a bunch of schools and. You know, I, I was able to see it from the admin perspective, um, but also from the teacher's perspective, like trying to sit down. If, you know, if we're saying, for instance, for hybrid, you know, we know how for an eye contact is. So what would that actually look like? And then we always know there's, there's those X factors that on paper sound great, but in reality. Sometimes it doesn't follow a plan, like every day when you're in the classroom, there's always something that, uh, you can never plan for. So. Um. Yeah, just, just trying to figure out how to bring that forward.
All right. Thank you, Irene. Appreciate it. And then there was one member who, um, came out as being a thinker. And that was Adal. His look up, look for is were thoughtful and kind responses. And, uh, being compromising and a team player. And his lookout for us were, uh, that he's, can be stubborn about achieving fairness and equity. And may get too tangled in details at times. Anything you wanted to add at all to that, um, Adal?
No, I thi- I think that summarizes pretty much my personality. And I took also this test multiple times. I remember. Back a, a decade ago, I took it as an intern and it's in the same category as, um, ideal or thinker, um, space. Um, so those are the things to look forwards and look out for.
All right. Thank you very much. And then, uh, we had two members who came out as relators. So we had people in every single category. Uh, the relators were, um, first Hussein, who shared his look for as being, uh, he is supportive, loyal, and a good listener. And the look out for is being that he can be overly lenient and overly possessive. Hussein, anything that you would like to comment on or add to that?
Turn this on. Uh, President Thorpe, I didn't make, uh, minor adjustments. Is that a little better?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, uh, like my colleagues, I've also taken this, um. Before, uh, it's not the exact science. It does change over time. Uh, so I agree with Jim and Pat that, you know, it depends on when are you taking it, uh. Uh, I think it was so- somewhat accurate, uh, my personality, though, at least the way I see myself and. Others see me, uh, but I'm more of a, like most of us, uh, I'm more of a, a people person. Uh, I, I enjoy the interactions between others and I kind of pick up on my own. If I'm gonna, you know, how I'm gonna work with you. Uh, I come from a philosophy is, it's not a random philosophy. I just made that up. It's that you make the rules. And I will follow them. And that's one way to get along with people. And I, and. Uh, I, I, you mentioned that, uh, all seven of us. We, all, all the different personalities were covered between the seven of us. I think that's a strength for the board. So different, uh, personalities are represented. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Hussein. And then, uh, the other relator is Roxanne. And Roxanne, um, any comments that you'd like to share on that?
Well, it was kind of interesting because I have taken tests like these before, and I generally. Fall kind of across the board and have traits in, in all of the categories. Um, but I do lean heavily to relater. I think relationships are important and they build on so much of the work that we do. You have to have relationships with your fellow board members. You have to have relationships with the community. Um, and that is definitely a strength of, of just the work that we do. Um, in general, it's, uh, useful to kind of get an idea of how we fit together. And then you can rely on the strengths of others to, um, help when those traits are called for. Uh, but generally speaking, I have some of the same, uh, lookout for is I am overly lenient, as is Hussein Barry. Um, but generally speaking, I think it was a good exercise, a good chance for us to, uh. Delve into each other's personalities and, uh, get a feel for the members of the sport. And it is definitely a strength that we all fall into different categories.
Thank you, Roxanne. I appreciate those comments. I agree with that. I, I think the strongest teams have a, a variety of personalities and, and, uh. People with different backgrounds, experiences. If you tend to have people who are too much alike, think too much alike, you tend to miss too much, right? You're missing valuable perspectives. Um, you don't see issues from all sides in the way you can if you have those different personalities. So. I absolutely believe that it's the strength of your team. That you have people kind of across the board in these different personality types. So in, in one way, it showed, um. Illustrate some of the differences that you have as board members, which of course, you know, again, that is a strength. Which takes us to the next agenda item, which is to identify shared interests, which is kind of the flip side of that. And the purpose of this is really to identify what are those things that you, that are common to all of you and that you share in terms of your perspective. So the question I want to ask, and while I'm saying that, I'm going to pull up. Another screen and again, bear with me. Okay, I'm going to record these as you share them. And I'll ask to my, um. You'll unfortunately see my typing skills on, on a laptop are not the strongest. I'm a little slow. I'll do my best, though. Uh, I may have to ask you to kind of give me your responses and, uh. Uh, slow down a little bit so I can record them all. But the question I want to ask, uh, is. In terms of shared interests, really, why are you here? And, and maybe that's an especially relevant question during, during these exceptionally difficult times, right? But why are you here as educators? Why are you here as members of the board? Why do you do this? Why are you serving this way? What drives you? What's really the motivation behind what you do? And I'm simply going to ask, um, anybody who wants to speak up and, and kind of share what thoughts they have in that regard. As you share them, I'm going to record them. And then we'll go back and see which of these that we all share in common. So who would like to start and kind of fire away with an answer to that question?
I see trustee Pavlicov saying.
Where I'm always the first. Um. I, I've really been involved in, uh, the community at, at, at both the city and the school district level for decades. And the reason I do it is because I'm, I'm fiercely protective i- uh, in promoting the success of our, um, city. And that includes the school, community, and the community at large, and making sure that we have, uh, the best viable. Um, ability to provide for our community members.
Thank you.
Trustee McDonald.
Well, primarily, my primary reason for being involved is I just have a passion for public education. It's the great equalizer. Um, it gives everyone a chance to be their best, to learn and to grow. And to be strong in their community. And I just think, uh, public education is so important. We need to nurture it. We need to support it. We need to advocate for it.
Thank you.
Trustee D'Ambrugio.
Yeah, as, as Mary, you know, the, the community in this city, um. You know, I have a lot of passion for. I've done a lot of things in this city o- over many years. And I have a passion for children, uh, and education. So. Um, I thought it was time to come forward and try to serve this board and, uh, be part of this board. Uh, to give our children, our teachers, and our city. Uh, you know, if you don't have a good, um, educational systems. In your city, you know, basically, um, it doesn't thrive. So, you know, it, it, it's makes the city very strong. Um, from, um, having a goo- good, good school system. So.
I'm not able to see trustee Watts or trustee Mosip currently on my screen. Trustee Watts, did you want to add anything at this time?
Um, yeah, I don't know why you can't. Can everyone else see me?
Yes. It's that you've only got so many panels on the side.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, so for me, it's both, I'm a strong child advocate, um, and also. Um, my interest comes from early childhood. So really maintaining high quality, early childhood experiences, especially through, um, expansion of the GSRP programs.
Thanks. Trustee Mosip, did you add anything?
Absolutely. Uh, achieving quality education in our schools and, uh, offering. Uh, quality education also at the, at the college, at Henry Ford College.
I'm gonna let John catch up with us. Before bringing him on to, trustee Barry, I see you. I wouldn't forget about you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, go for it.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, I live in a great community, uh, what I believe is one of the greatest cities in the world. Uh, uh, most of my adulthood, I've always wanted to give back, uh, to the community. It's so good to us. And I've served in many different capacities. Uh, most of the time I give back to the community itself, you know, through giving back to our youth, which is our future in education. Some of the other capacities I've, you know, been involved with, like Little League football, PTA, border realtors. Uh, and about a decade ago, somebody said, hey, you need to get involved with the school board. We need you there. And, uh, it's been a great experience. It's been so amazing. It's an amazing feeling to give back. Uh, to the district that, uh, produced so many. Uh, so many graduates went on to do some great things. Uh, I'm a, I'm a product of the school district. So are my children. And, and one thing I've noticed is, uh, most people are very, very excited to say. And I'm a product of Dearborn Public Schools. And just the little role that I play in that, uh. Uh, gives me a great amount of satisfaction. Thank you.
I should not have let trustee Barry go for me because I'm repeating some of the same things. Uh, I think there are several of us that are products of the schools. Uh, so for me. Uh, I want to be able to give back to a school district and the community that have given me a lot as a parent. I want to be able to, to do everything I can to help with education for my kids and all the other kids. Uh, and I also want to be able to use the, the skills that I've developed, uh, to support, uh, the school district.
All right. Is there anything else anyone would like to add? Feel free, please. It, it's not something that you can only get one shot at. If there's anything else anyone would like to add, I'd be happy to add it.
I, I'd like to add.
You want any? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I'd like to add one item, um, which is obviously, um, being. Uh, servants of the community and making sure that their tax dollars are, are well spent. Um, so.
And I was, I heard another comment.
Um, that was me, John, uh, Glenn.
Yeah, I'd love to hear from you too, Glenn, on that.
Sure. Okay. So I appreciate all the comments. I think we have a great board and I'm really excited. And I know it. Really comes down to a partnership between the superintendent board and in our case, the college president. Uh, knowing that we built a great, the college president and I have built a great relationship. I think. Um, many of the board members, especially the ones that hired me, know, I know trustee Petchelkov has known me for 25 years, I believe. So for me, my passion was I came from a family of attorneys and I decided to go into education after coaching hockey. Uh, I wanted to work with students and my early thoughts and, uh, passion were developed from my time as a teacher at Salina, uh, Elementary. Um, and I just found that I loved the, you know, what all the board trustees, I got in it to make a difference. And. You know, I'm an educator and that's how I've come into it, instructional leader. Um, I've, I've moved along because I've had great mentors along the way. That have encouraged me to go into more leadership. And so, uh, along with that encouragement, it was different superintendents in the past, along with different principals. And so Dearborn Public Schools, I'm passionate about because it's a great district and I don't, I didn't start out in. It, you know, I didn't live in the, in the district, uh, when I was hired. I was recruited out, out of, uh, University Detroit Mercy, but I've been here ever since. And now I'm. I've been part of the community for 25 years and I'm just passionate about championing it for our students and students first. And. Uh, I do my, uh, energy and I talked to trustee McDonald yesterday. My energy is with. When I'm with the students in the buildings is my passion. And right now it, it's very difficult because of the pandemic. I can't wait to get back there. Uh but that's kind of where I come from and uh I want to champion and that's why I'm also very active on state level because I want to show. And I know the board, a lot of times, board trustees will co-present with me and our team and wanted to just promote our our district to continue to advance. At a high level for the benefit of our students and and making sure that, you know, Dearborn Schools always leads the way. So I'm proud to be an employee uh right now as superintendent, but along the way, I was proud as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, HR. And I'll continue to be proud and I'm proud of this board and I look forward to working collaboratively with our community.
Thank you.
Could I just add one thing as well?
Absolutely.
The reason that school boards were created low these many years ago. Was to maintain a local connection with the cross section of the community and their values and educating uh their students. And providing a free and public education to those students that reflects the community at large. Which is why boards of education should not be made up of all parents or or all educators or anything like that. Because the cross section of the community, be it a senior citizen or uh somebody in business, will um give that um. Flavor of the community values at large and represent what they are looking for in the educational uh system for their students in that community.
Thank you, Mary. I felt like I may have missed part of your answer there. I want to make sure what I wrote was maintain local connection with the cross section of the community. Does that cover it?
That's good.
All right, thank you.
One last point on my my end here is that uh we all take a lot of pride in the achievements of our students and uh. In our, what our district is uh is able to achieve. Maybe it's certain buildings or the district overall. Uh I feel a lot of pride and I hear my colleagues pretty much share those feelings too.
Thank you.
I just want to add to that as well. Um the pride in just being a part of Dearborn, since it is such a leader in education, uh it's huge. And I think it's real important and we are unusual in the fact that uh we have been working on building a seamless education with the uh. The um connection between the district and Henry Ford College. So I think seamless education and just the fact that uh this district in particular leads the way in so many aspects. It's a point of pride and it's a reason why we all work so hard to keep it that way.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Um that I would add is uh going through my life and especially being, once I was elected. Showing that I are proving that you belong and trying to become a better person. Uh to give people that that confidence that that you really do belong in the position that that you are in. So always driving to be a better person uh to represent uh the the district and the community.
Anything else? Okay, so this can be a little bit tricky because like Jim had mentioned, I I am seeing a limited number of windows too. And um so I can't see everybody. Normally, I use kind of a thumbs up or down on this. So I think the way I'll approach it is just ask if somebody uh dissents, disagrees. Just uh to speak up and say so and maybe talk a little bit about why. But what I'm really uh aiming for is identify which of these interests that you shared as individuals are shared by all members of the board. So if you agree, great, you don't need to say anything. If you disagree, just speak up and say so. First, being fiercely protective and promoting the success of the city and community. Having a passion for public education. Having a passion for children. Knowing that a strong community needs strong schools, supporting that effort. Being a strong child advocate. Maintaining high quality early childhood experiences. Achieving quality education in our schools. Giving back to the community and the district. Doing all you can to help your kids and all other kids. Utilizing your skills and abilities to support the district. Being a servant of the community and making sure that the tax dollars are well spent. To make a difference. Championing, championing students first. Promoting Dearborn Public Schools. Helping Dearborn Public Schools to always lead the way. Maintaining a local connection with the cross section of the community. Having pride in the achievement of students and the district. Having pride in being a part of Dearborn Public Schools as leaders of education. And proving that you belong and becoming a better person to represent the district and the community. So hearing no disagreement, what that would reflect is that these really are shared interests. These are interests that you all have. Uh that drive why you're here and and why you serve in the capacity you do. This can be important to remember and I will save this and share it back with the district so that you have it in hand. And I think it's good to um remind yourselves on occasion where there may be disagreement. Going back to the personality survey, you know, you're all here for the same reasons, basically. You're all about the same things. You're driven by the same things, right? Which brings you here all together. Yet you're different people, different personalities, different backgrounds and experiences. Again, that's a very positive thing. It can also create disagreement, sometimes dissent, but it's really valuable to remember. That even though you may have disagreements about how you go about accomplishing what you need to. Um what you put in place in order to accomplish what you need to, et cetera. Um that fundamentally, you all want the same thing and you're all basically here for the same purposes. Um and I think that can help sometimes keep you grounded and keep those disagreements from driving you apart because there's so much more. Really that binds you together and it's good to reflect on that and and remind ourselves of that periodically and in the kind of situations that you're in. So do you, are there any further comments on this questions? Anything else anybody would like to to add? Okay, thank you for that. So we're going to move on to um the next item on the agenda, which is board and superintendent roles and responsibilities. Some of you have been on the board for a while and you may be um a little bit more familiar and comfortable with this than others. Some of you are new, but I think it's always good to review um kind of. And remind ourselves of what those various roles are. And again, golly, bear with me. This is so hard to see on my screen.
Mr. Severi, um sorry to interrupt you, but while we're, while you're doing that, I I'd like to ask um president of the board and my colleagues. If they would like to reconsider citizen participation item. My phone has been off the hook about parents not being able to participate in citizen participation item was only opened for forty-five minutes. Um and others are trying to access the link and it's saying it's already closed. So I I'd like to move um or make a motion if it's not out of order to to reconsider the item and open the link for parents and community members to voice their opinion. Until um we dive into that discussion.
I would support that. It's, I would support that.
Discussion?
Can I ask, are you, are you suggesting that we open up the link, let parents uh communicate? And then we use that when we come back from our break at one o'clock for the next session? Because I don't want to interrupt Mr. Severi's time.
That that that's correct, yeah.
That's what I understood.
Yep.
I just wanted to clarify to make sure we understand what we're voting on.
Sure.
Because that will, are we limited in the amount of time that we have this Zoom session in the afternoon? So that if if we have a, we know that in the past, the comment period has taken up a a good chunk of time in reading.
Dr. Malaico, are we under any time constraint?
Okay. I'm back. We, it's just the availability of the board, I guess. We had the agenda, I believe we said um. It's, you know, the pleasure of the board. I'm fine. Um I don't know where, we had it saying from one twenty to four thirty, so. I don't anticipate, depending on the amount of questions, um that the presentation will take that amount of time. Uh but I did anticipate there'd be discussion from the board at the pleasure of the board.
And that's why I just want to make sure that we, time-wise, are able to incorporate reading and hours worth of.
And and just so like the board is aware legally, just so you know, and I and I get, you know, you go make your decisions. Um we actually have made the decision to open um, you know, the public commenting prior to the start of the board meeting legally. And I'm just saying what is required is that it it it's open, just like if you were in the board meeting, um you know, you would be there maybe. Uh if we weren't in a pandemic, you'd be there fifteen to half an hour before and then uh it would close. You know, obviously, if someone was there, sometimes the board, the chair or the president would allow, even if it wasn't submitted by the seven ten. So we've been flexible there. Um but I think we've always accommodated by, you know, opening that window prior to the board meeting. We do it at the regular board meeting. Uh it's not required, but we've done it because we're trying to accommodate. I think today, because it's a special retreat in the agenda, um we've always um kind of done the public commenting. You know, gotten it out of the way and then moved forward. So it kind of does follow our protocols, but obviously, I'm open to whatever the pleasure of the board. But I just wanted to put that on the record that, you know, we're following it legally and we've been, and we've been very accommodating to the community because we're not required to do it that way, but we've done it.
We are.
And we've also published, you know, that we publish the board meetings because of the virtual, so we've kind of gone the extra step through. It just happens that this has been the protocol we've done for, you know, for special retreats. We've always kind of done it that way. And usually, we didn't, you know, we haven't had a retreat. Obviously, we added the afternoon session uh later, but we, you know, we're not used to getting a lot of comments at at retreats when we do training. So I just wanted to, you know, everyone to be aware.
In respect to Mr. Silvery's time, um I'd like to not take too much time talking about this one. Trustee Petlicoff, did you have another item to add?
No, I just want to make sure that we understand that this retreat is to do board business. So that we don't limit our ability to to do our board business uh because of public commentary coming in um on top of that, that was not anticipated.
One thing before trustee Barry, I turn it over to you is, would would the board members be comfortable if we said that the comments had to be in by one o'clock? Which is roughly the time we'll break the first half of this. And then when we come back from our break, then we can get into the reading those comments. Would people be comfortable with that?
I think that's fine. That's a good window. Mr. Barry, no.
Yeah, I would be comfortable with uh, you know, closing it at one o'clock. Uh we did set up the study session for the board retreat, but we also did add to the agenda. So at this point, I'd like to see the question call, please.
Right, so we've got a motion from trustee Moses, supported by trustee Barry, that we reopen the ability for the public to comment up till one o'clock. Did I get a rule, please?
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Deambrazio?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Moses, yes. Ms. Petlicoff?
Yes.
Ms. Watts? Watts?
trustee Watts?
Yes.
Mr. James Thorpe?
Yes.
Stop saying mister and trustee.
Sure.
Dr. Malaico, if you could please let the uh the district know to reopen it.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a second step away to make a call to make sure.
And if we can also then make sure that we um block out what was already shared previously, so we don't repeat anything.
I am uh online and uh.
Okay, Dave, you got it?
So um I will take care of reopening uh um, I will contact Katie and we will reopen the form on the website. And uh keep it open until one PM as voted on by the board.
Thank you, Mr. Mustard. All right, Mr. Sverri, back to you.
All right, thank you. No worries whatsoever. Okay, so this was one of the forms that you received and I realized to see this on the screen, this is very small.
But they all have it.
Yes, everybody received this. So you either, if you printed it, you'll have it in hand, which is part of the reason I like to ask people to print these things. It makes it a little bit easier. Or if you're able to uh pull up the attachment to see for yourself. But I'll go ahead and and here's the way I want to approach this. And again, I'm going to tell you that um, you know, I don't have the ability to see all of you. So my original plan was, as we, let me go back and say this. I've looked uh for pretty extensively for something that captures kind of the differentiation between board responsibilities versus superintendent responsibilities. And then speaks even to shared responsibilities. And this document is the best that I have found. This was a June two thousand three statement from uh Connecticut, signed by the Connecticut Association of Boards of Ed. And the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents. But I think it it fits. I think it's it's uh highly relevant and in in my estimation, I think it really hits the mark. So originally, I planned to ask you, just with kind of uh, you know, showing me with uh one finger up, if you think you're you're doing this well. Two, if maybe you're kind of ambivalent and maybe room for improvement. Three, not so much. Um can't see you also, I'm not going to ask that. So I'm going to ask this. I'm just going to go through. And this will overcome to the inability to see the very small font here, but I'll read each one of these just quickly aloud. And give you a chance to interject if if A, you want to discuss the fact that maybe this is an area that's where there's improvement needed. Um or B, if you want to even perhaps take issue and you're not sure that you agree that this is defined correctly, that this is reflects accurately a board responsibility. Versus a superintendent responsibility versus a shared responsibility. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so what it lists is board responsibilities to establish and regularly review all policies, ensuring they're lawful. And designed to improve the quality of the school district. Also to hire, support and conduct an annual formal evaluation of the superintendent of schools. I'm quite sure you do that. To refer administrative communications, including questions, complaints and personnel inquiries to the superintendent as appropriate. And to follow the board established chain of command. I'm just pausing just slightly between each to make sure there's not going to be any response. To seek the superintendent's recommendation before taking action. To adopt, advocate for and oversee a school budget which is responsive to district goals and meets the needs of all students. Delegate to the superintendent responsibility for all administrative functions except those specifically reserved to the board through board policy. To conduct an annual self-evaluation of its own leadership, governance and teamwork. Do you folks do a self eval?
Yes, we do.
Very good. To ensure appropriate resources for the superintendent to carry out his or her responsibilities. They have the board chair work with the superintendent, in this case, board president, to develop meeting agendas. To determine and include in district policy hiring procedures that clearly define board and superintendent responsibilities. To communicate and interpret the school district's mission to the public and to listen and incorporate appropriate community perspectives into board action. And to ensure that there is a supportive, smoothly operating leadership team that advocates both for children and for the community.
I'd like to add one thing, although these are all um board responsibilities. Like if you go to the first one, reviewing the policies and ensuring they're lawful, there is a team that helps us so much and I want to take a moment to thank. there is a team that helps us so much and I want to take a moment to thank that team. We have uh, counselors, we have the um, the HR department. We have tremendous experts that just support us in the work that we do. And I just want to give a shout out to them. And we've done so well on our budget because we've got professionals like Tom that are just outstanding. And that goes across the board. We've got some really good people that help support our mission and help us do our job well.
I, I appreciate that comment. Thank you for making that. And, and I'll just emphasize too, where these may well be fundamentally the responsibilities of the board where it falls on your shoulders. Certainly to accomplish your responsibilities, there are times that you have to enlist the, the guidance, support and assistance of others. And so I appreciate that comment and it's nice to hear that you feel really great about the, the type of support and assistance you do get from administrators and other staff members in the district.
Quick shout out to Joanne too, because I forgot to mention her and she does a lot of the, the grunt work that we need.
I'm sure she does.
Trustee Barry?
Point number three.
Yes.
Uh, it says to refer administrative communications, including questions, complaints and personnel inquiries to the superintendent as appropriate and to follow the board established chain of command. We really don't have that set like in policy or bylaws. But I was always uh, told and this is what I always done that if we get something like, just like for today's meeting, I'm sure we all receive many emails. Uh, I guess if you get one personally, you know, just to your, your own account. And you know, I would just say, you know, thank you for your thoughts. I will share with my chair and my superintendent. Uh, last year we kind of went away from that. I would just like to get, you know, what, what other people are thinking. Uh, for example, there were some emails that came in the last few days and you know, thank you, you know, President Thor for answering on our behalf. Uh, but sometimes I find that uh, you know, some of my colleagues are starting to, you know, put some other things out there. If it's something like, like this today, you know, it's like obviously which direction this is going, but there might be a time where uh, it might be, you know, it might be a good idea for the superintendent and the chair to kind of take the lead on answering these. I just would like to open it up and see what anybody else is thinking.
Trustee Pat was gone.
Yeah, as uh, the oldest board member here, we had an informal amongst the board, um, many terms ago that um, reflected such a, uh, in idea. It wasn't written in our guidelines that we would speak with one voice. We had a problem uh, many years ago where every board member was responding in their own voice to community members and confusing um, ideas and or misinformation being spread. And so we decided at that time that uh, we would allow for the board chair or president and/or the superintendent to be the one to respond as a voice and communicate that response, share it with the full board so that the full board knew that the individual communications were being answered, but that they would reflect the uh, one voice of the board rather than, and we do have a policy which does speak to having uh, uh, one voice for the board uh, philosophy when it comes to communicating um, at large so that uh, our individual perspectives were not conflicting at the time. So I, I believe that is what uh, trustee Barry is uh, referring to. And that is something that I don't believe we've ever set down pen to paper for, but that we have honored uh, throughout the years. We rotate a board president every single year. We are not, um, so we don't have the same person sitting in the president's seat. We, that's also an informal policy that we have uh, conducted with nothing in writing as to not following Robert's rules of, of, of electing our um, executive board. Everybody rotates in and out. So that's the way we um, have come up to it, but it isn't formal.
Well, hence, one of the things I wanted to do today was maybe we should write down some of these things as procedures. So we don't have to always try to remember that we do it a certain way. I can tell you that in the last couple of days, as I've been responding on behalf of the board, I have a deeper appreciation of everyone else who has sat in that, in that position as to we want to let people know that we hear them, even if we don't necessarily agree with them. Um, and I also thank the trustees for passing the, the messages along to me so that we can make sure that we do have just one response because we're not here to all agree at all, at all times.